Is nice.
No more sanctuary cities.
Like Trump's gonna do the insurrection act if they keep doing these kinda things. Like Trump's. Can't do the insurrection.
Trump, you need to take away all federal funding of these. Sanctuary city bullshit. All federal funding has gotta go. Get rid of mail in ballots, yeah, for sure.
That's so sad.
I have a question, did you know that trans women are men? Yes, I did.
Wolf tickets, that's what they're selling.
Defund Salem, no more sanctuary cities. What are they saying?
Like dude, the cops even hate it.
Defund Salem, no more sanctuary cities. Yeah, we're like.
Antifa needs to be handled by the feds. They're already uh international and national terrorist organizations. So they need to just get handled. Anytime you're saying you're Antifa out in front of a federal building, then you should be instantly arrested as a terrorist. Instantly, whether you're joking about it or not, that you can have your day in court, you can have your due process. Once you say you're Antifa, that's self uh you know. That's you, you self proclaimed it for yourself and you deserve to be treated the way that you should be treated.
I need to write it out, they're gonna have this kinda shit again somewhere else, I need to write out a speech or. So I'm not so damn, I'm nervous, I wanted to.
Oh dude, Salem is nearly just as bad, I mean. Tried to make it where you can't do the drugs no more, but people. Still do, they still just do the drugs, it's right on the corner, like, the main thing now at least, that you can't do it like. Next to a building that's uh open for business, at least that, geez.
We are Charlie Kirk.
Like, liter- it's so funny, like, a couple of weeks ago, I was at the bar. Everybody smokes weed in Oregon damn near, okay, I'm at the bar. I I go to light up a joint, so I didn't even light it yet, I just like lit the lighter, you know, and I put the joint in my mouth, and this lady says. You can't smoke weed in here, it's illegal, and I'm like, really? And she's illegal, she's an illegal freaking Mexican immigrant and she's telling me that I can't smoke weed cuz it's illegal.
Oh Ilhan Omar should have been deported a long time ago.
This is what the type of uh entitlement that sanctuary cities give these kinda people.
I can't even say her name, Ilhan Omar should have been deported long ago, she should never be in office.
Like, we're just trying to chill for a minute, I wanna go in and look, but. I mean, since it's full right here, they won't let you go like right there and look into the actual meeting. You have to go down to the back uh. A back meeting room and watch it on TV.
Liaise are, uh I'll probably be with him next week or so. Probably see some, some lives of me and him here pretty soon. Ilhan bangs her brother.
They try to make it like sound like they're being compassionate because they're caring about these people, but they're not caring about us, that's the problem.
Oh, there's, I guarantee there's transgenderism books in that library. It's uh getting more funding, right, for sanctuary cities.
And expanding the laws and the policies.
She's married to her brother, that's illegal. Trump needs to end all federal funding until they stop with these sanctuary laws bullshit.
Yep.
No more sanctuary cities, no more anchor babies, no more illegals. City council meeting.
I was like, is the governor there or just the mayor?
It's uh getting more funding, right, for sanctuary cities. Federal funding until they stop with these sanctuary laws bullshit.
Get the fuck out of our country.
Sanctuary cities, no more anchor babies, no more illegals. They gots to get the fuck on. They gotta.
I got a new job, you guys.
They don't have to stay here, but they. They don't have to go home, but they can't stay here.
Watch, if we get like a voter ID passed, then they're gonna instantly not care about immigrants, illegals. They won't, cuz they won't be able to get votes off of them no more, so they won't care about them, instantly they won't.
What's next Tuesday, I forget, I got some, I got a new job, you guys.
That's how Democrats are, man, all they care about is getting the into office, getting the votes, so they can run some corrupt bribery scheme. Some uh, you know, money laundering, some uh. Stock fund.
Me and Brent have been working and remodeling.
All kinds of shit, that's all they do.
Cabinets and we're gonna be doing a bunch of other stuff, so.
NGOs and then back to themselves again.
Friday at the very least, if not Monday through Saturday for a while. But I'll still be going to ICE and I'll still be live streaming and it's only gonna get better because Doc is gonna help me. Shout out Doc O'Shea, if you're not following Doc. Uh at Doc underscore O'Shea.
Six thirty seven.
Doc underscore O'Shea, right? Yeah, if you're not following, uh at Doc underscore O'Shea, go follow him. He's a solid ass dude.
Shout out Doc.
Solid ass dude and he gainfully employed me.
Yeah, climatics, big city.
Yeah, he he's helping me out and Brent out big time, he's a solid ass dude, so go run up his, his uh. Go run up his X for him and tell him Tommy sent you and that we love him. We love you, Doc. Shout out JD Delay too, Span City News, Climatics TV. Hey, what up, Greek, I see you. He used to have social media, but uh. Follow Doc, awesome dude, Doc Doc O'Shea, it's D A W K. Doc O'Shea.
Like, I'm kinda fighting a little bit of a cold.
Doc underscore O'Shea. Go follow him, let's get him up to like three thousand followers in the next couple of days, you guys.
For a little bit and then it'll just go off.
Let's run it up, he used to have uh, he used to have social media, but uh something happened and he lost it. So now he had to. Lost all his followers, so we're trying to run it back up for him, he deserves it and he's a, he's a wizard on the computer.
Seven betters, send a prayer to heaven.
Pimp on a blimp, no, pimp on a blimp is Alex Stein, primetime Alex Stein. Shout out primetime Alex Stein, we love you, brother, we're here to deport all the illegals except for the big booty Latinas. The nines and tens can stay, the rest gotta go, the eights are too late.
Yeah.
Let's fucking go. Se- seven betters send a prayer to heaven, but it ain't gonna work cuz she's still gotta be deported.
Okay, I was like, that's the health part.
Thank you, Adam.
Like that is, how many things were on the iTunes?
Four, it's uh at Tocock, D A W K underscore O'Shea. We love primetime Alex Stein, I can't wait to meet him and do some content, we're gonna go have some fun, watch, it's in the, it's in the works. We gotta go. Leave the eights and sevens, gotta have some napkins or what? Love Alex Stein, I gotta get up the nerve to come, I I didn't know about this until. Late last night when we were out having fun.
What the hell?
What everybody, Josh and them told us about it.
And dude was wearing an ugly sweater. Soup, soup.
And I said, oh, we gotta go. We gotta go in support of ICE and let people know.
Anchor baby laws gotta go.
Americans support deportation, mass deportation, not just deportation, not just the violent criminals. But every single illegal alien, if you don't have papers, you gotta go. If the cartel brought you here, you gotta go. If you overstayed your visa, you gotta go. If you're an anchor baby, you gotta go. It's just a fact. It's just a fact, Jack, it's just a fact, Jack, it's just a fact.
Nope. Yeah, he knows.
Yeah, that's what they do.
They all know.
That's what he does. Hey, I got a question for you.
You can feel any which way about it, but you all know.
I think he knows, he just don't wanna answer it. Why do you guys support illegal aliens so much? Why do you guys support criminals? You don't have nothing to say? You don't got nothing to say?
Yeah, they were having a city council meeting and one of the uh.
I think that was a heat. You never know with these motherfuckers anymore.
They literally just.
Shipper.
Anyways, there was a city council meeting and ICE was on the agenda a little bit because they're trying to expand sanctuary policies in Salem, Oregon.
Criminal aliens.
They're already pretty much like the same as Portland and they just wanna make it to where.
What is Doc O'Shea, no, O'Shea is O S H E I L.
Business such as Home Depot to collect people.
I L or I E L?
That's what they're trying to like expand the law to cover that essentially. I I think a little bit more too, I didn't read it all, I only read that little part about. They wanna essentially make it where the feds can't go into a private business to make arrests.
Dead Wilder.
It's a private business, but it's open to the public, so when it's a public access, it's not really the same, you know. Be different if you own like a, you know, rock quarry and you don't want people to come there cuz it's unsafe environment. You don't wanna be responsible, people don't understand how it is.
I mean, I'm always up for an interview.
Talking to Home Depot or like grocery store, you don't want them to come in and arrest people because you're a sanctuary state and you're trying to. Make it look like they're attacking people.
Tell the next one, November is trans woman prostate awareness month.
It's like, yeah, you gotta get them when it's the safest and easiest way to get them, you know, is. You know, when they're out in public, I mean, if you don't know where they live and you can't go to their house and pick it, uh.
Unfollow. Unfollow. But you guys do me a big favor.
It always messes me up when I'm talking.
Go and just mass unfollow them. Doc O'Shea, yeah.
Yeah, anyways. We don't need, we have so many immigrants in Salem, man.
Go, you guys.
I, my dad used to work roofing with this guy that he's illegal, he has like three different IDs. Um, you know, so that he doesn't get caught up.
USA first.
And he's a piece of shit.
He's trying to throw.
If I ever find that motherfucker, dude.
I didn't tag P Town, P Town blocked me anyways. Tommy for Governor of Oregon. Hey, did you know November was trans woman prostate awareness day? Oh, was that your IQ?
Yeah, that guy actually, he like molested my daughter, but she never told us or knew or anything about it cuz it was like when she was like six. And we stayed at his house like three days or something, maybe like a week or something and. Yeah.
P Town Patriot.
You know, touched her privates, threw her pants and stuff, but still, she didn't know what it was or that it was wrong or anything cuz she was a little girl.
Portland tonight for sure, we're not staying out here, this is supposed to be over like by eight o'clock.
About it at school that it's, you know, like sexual contact or whatever.
I like my hat too.
And then I tried to find that guy, but of course, he's illegal, he has.
He brought it out to me and it's my new favorite hat.
Yep, that motherfucker is gonna hit the wood chipper if I find his ass.
What's Will's handle, it's uh P Town Patriot eighty two.
I told my dad cuz, you know, my dad, he, you know, he's like alcoholic, cooking shit and he hangs out with some slummy ass people, so.
He's on his period, he was grumpy.
Uh, I told him to try to keep an eye out and that if he ever finds him, just give me a call, you know what I mean?
Need my check back is all I follow.
Give me a call, tell him we can have a beer and we can chill.
Will, Will wants to fight me.
He's like, okay, why? I'm like, huh, I wanted to talk to him about some stuff, he was like, okay. Like, my dad knows, dude.
That's hilarious.
I never liked freaking pedophiles or rapists ever in my whole life, man, when I was like fifteen, I beat the dogs piss out of four freaking Mexican dudes that raped my girlfriend.
Him being Antifa makes too much shit.
Pretty much two real girlfriends in my whole life and well, just my wife and one girlfriend before that. And yeah. She was raped by four Mexican dudes, her and her friend.
Oh yeah, he's probably watching on YouTube from somebody else that's re-streaming.
I fucking found them motherfuckers one day. Anything, I wouldn't say his face, you know. Swimming at the river or some shit.
Unlike him, he likes to just go on live and just start rambling.
A baseball bat and a fucking crowbar or a claw or a cat's paw.
And slash my tires.
Those motherfuckers got lit.
Yeah, it would be all bad. It would be all bad.
Headbutt hurt around the world, that's what my buddy told me. I play darts with.
Thanksgiving plans.
In Salem, Salem darts and we freaking. He followed me on X and he's like, that's the headbutt around the world, bro.
Bitch.
He's like, that shit is crazy, I was like, well, I was hoping it was gonna get a little more uh acknowledgement somewhere, but. I think in a way, people are worried if I'm gonna get in trouble or not, but like, I already talked to the police.
Everyone?
The DA could press if they wanted to, but. Even the cop said, the way that he came after me, in a way, like, he aggressed me and I just stood there, I didn't go towards him, he came towards me.
Knock me out and then he will be famous.
Flinched at me like three times, any one of those times, I had every right to defend myself, that's still a threat and that's still an attack.
He has me blocked, so I can't watch it from my phone, but.
Told us that little short cop out there that's got the Edgar haircut.
Now he's twenty seven hundred, yeah.
He's cool, he's a cool cop.
Was at like three K followers earlier today and now he's down to like twenty seven hundred.
It's hard for the cops to be cool cops out there with us because, you know.
I don't. Pop Tifa. What's happening at ICE, do you guys know? I don't know if we'll end up going to ICE, we might just uh. Call it a night, I have to be up at like six in the morning to go to work tomorrow.
Yeah, Mike.
No one will ever knock Tommy out, not if I can help it, not if I can help it. Who's Will? I don't know. Who, Will is Spider Mike's son, Pam is his grandma.
Yeah, the thing is, is in Oregon, they don't really have like self-defense technically, like uh everywhere does.
Doc O'Shea, yeah.
But not like, it's not.
O'Shea.
It's not like a legal defense actually in Oregon. It's not a legal defense to say that I had to defend myself.
Mentally Idaho in the chat. We love you, Mike, go follow Mentally Idaho, he's been out here, what, three different times? Three different times to cover what's happening?
Yeah.
He's a good dude.
Get some petitions.
Oh, and yeah, um, I might be having uh perks here pretty soon because uh Doc is also gonna help me with that. Cuz I've never done, had any perks, but he's done it before, so he said he was gonna help me out to get that set up.
Out there, they would all sign them.
Oh, look out. I'm gonna get my own uh website URL or whatever.
He's like Chase probably couldn't find a spot.
See, that would've been boring in there, I wouldn't have been able to talk to my chat. What up, Aunt Colleen, we love you. Tinkerton was at ICE last night by himself, he had that dude from Canada was there with him too, I think, and I think Costin was there last night also for a little while. Here, little brother, Tifa.
Tonight, Tinkerton.
Will taking a dump in Chandler's, I caught him coming out of there once, no, I'm just playing, I'm just playing. Oh shit. They were cleaning up the feedie on mailboxes at ICE. Do hats make trans women men again? No.
The truth is, is if, if they don't rebuttal when you say it, then they're in acquiescence, silence is acquiescence. Acquiescence is agreement.
Yeah, I can change, I can change the way the hat lights up, look. It'll light up slowly, or he does that. Or does that, hey, did you know? Hey, did you know that trans women are men? I think he knows, Sam, I should've caught him when he was closer.
Yo, yo.
See, and it does that.
Chase.
And it does that.
What's up, brother?
And it does that.
Chilling.
I don't know which one I liked the most. Hey, what's a woman? I like that one.
There we go.
Yeah, um, somebody brought me this hat, you guys, uh Oreo's on X, brought me this hat. The other night, uh the other weekend when he was here.
Yeah, Chase.
So what's going on?
And uh.
It's the city council meeting, she's watching it on the phone because it's all full, so we can't go in there really, you have to go down into the room. You go watch it on TV, you can be in the group.
How you doing tonight? Alright, alright, hey, what's a woman?
Uh, an adult human female.
Perfect answer. Shout out Portland Andy, I seen him, I seen him earlier in Will's chat, giving him hell, I love you, bro, that shit was funny as hell.
You're like, they're at Walmart pushing a cart around here, illegal, you're in a safe place. Like, no, that's some bullshit.
You will Tifa only has more followers right now because everyone is sticking up for Tommy.
What is a woman?
Adult human female.
Thank you, Method Woman. You guys all get gold stars.
It's a human mammal that produces Big Gamut types.
Yep. XX chromosome, don't lie.
I was like, that's simple mammalology.
We love Oreo, yep. My chat said, hey Chase, what up, bro? I need to carry gold star tickets for those that answer the question correctly. What is a woman?
Adult human female.
What is a woman?
Yeah.
Adult human female.
You guys all get gold stars.
Yeah, states can't over the federal, that's right, that's what I said earlier when she was talking and she's talking about how the policies are gonna go.
Lie.
You know.
Divinity Mary, we love you too. Only Ambra, yeah, I get it, not everybody likes my language, but it's, it's, it's not for everybody, but it gets the point across.
Word.
I'm happy Will blocked me. Three gold stars, let's fucking go. I love you too, Jenfei.
They already did the ICE.
Oh, what up, Haley? Took me a second to remember the picture. Four point four K, Climatics, I love you, bro, hell yeah.
Like, maybe Black Bear Diner.
Everybody on Climatics chat, I love you guys.
Black Bear Diner probably has them.
Yeah, we're out here just bullshitting.
That's like my new favorite, yeah.
How you doing tonight? You bastard, bro. The party is home, the party is here. Who is Will, I wanna be blocked? Where's my chicken and dumplings? Did you know?
At least she has some really nice looking flowers and stuff, a lot better than Antifa's weed.
I haven't had homemade chicken and dumplings in hell long, that shit made me want, where do they serve homemade chicken and dumplings? Yeah. My grandma used to make it hell good with Bisquick and shit.
Black Bear Diner probably has them.
Yeah. But I bet you hers is better.
Guess what her name is?
Are you gonna bring me one? You bastard, bro.
Guess what her name is?
I was gonna say, I bet it's Karen, just cuz your ass.
Who is Will, I wanna be blocked?
Yeah, I saw, I was just watching Canada up there, man, Canada's doing it too. You guys have to do the same, put up with the same kinda crap up there too. It's happening everywhere, everywhere sick of it, look what's happening over in the UK.
I try, I'm funny every now and then. Chandler may hire Will now? Will sniffs the hot pocket, the rot pocket, that's so gross. They, they said Will sniffs the hot pocket. The rot hot pocket. Oh, that's terrible, did you wash it? Yeah, I know, uh, my wife did all the laundry yesterday and had to do wash everything, yep. No, it does, and whenever you, we took, I took a shower, I had to take the first half of the shower like this. Get, so it didn't go down my body, cuz when you wipe it, when you just do it like this, I've learned the hard way, that shit goes to places you don't want it to go. Definitely. P Town been running his mouth for two and a half hours on live, the weed making him paranoid.
It does look prettier than Antifa's weed, though.
What is that, Mameo? What is that for? All the illegals? You guys know what this is for? Guys know what this is for?
If it's got an apple, kids.
If it's got an apple, it's also got a banana. You guys aren't very friendly. You don't like that I want illegals deported? Well, you came here for something, I'm not trying to make friends, I'm just trying to figure out what that is.
That's what's crazy. They just won't even really respond or say anything at all when you ask them any questions, they just ignore you.
Fresh flowers and not all rotten, but they even got fresh fruit, I kinda want a banana. Kinda making me want a nanner. Kinda want a nanner, but I, I don't know where they been. I don't know. If it's got an apple, it's also got a banana. Chase, what up, big dog? How you doing?
Are you doing voodoo out here?
Triggering some people like always. They won't talk. It's the Salem shutdown.
Gotta send a prayer to heaven, she's out here doing voodoo. The hell? Uh, they said maybe they don't speak English.
Oh, they speak English, they just don't like my hat. Why you support illegal aliens being in this country? Hello? No. Do you know that illegal aliens are wholly different than. 戴上了 masks outside.
And we love immigrants. Yep.
Covid masks specifically?
That's right.
Oh, I like to smoke. Are you dabbing? Aw, that's not dab, that's boring.
Nobody does. Nobody supports fascism. This is America. Nope.
Voodoo, running from the magic. No, we're not. I'm standing here asking questions. Did you know?
Trans women are men. Did you know? Break that Kit Kat bar. Why don't you guys support protecting American citizens?
Oh, they speak English, they just don't like my hat. Hello? Do you know that illegal aliens are totally different than legal immigrants? We love legal immigration, but we gotta deport all the illegal ones. Do you support illegal aliens in our country?
Yo!
We love Trump.
That's so true.
Do you know what fascism means? Do you know what fascism means? Can you define what fascism is? No, we're not. I'm standing here asking questions. Did you know? Trans women are men? Why do you guys support illegal immigration so much?
What is a woman?
Why do you support criminals?
What is a woman?
Yeah, that's the thing. You guys don't even fight this hard for legal citizens.
It's always gotta be some crazy white liberal woman that's gonna come out here and start talking to.
Why do you support illegal aliens so much?
Yeah, I'm gonna protect these illegals.
No more sanctuary cities.
For real, it's sick.
No more sanctuary cities. Did you guys know that liberal white women are the death of America?
Transgender's just the king, bro.
Yeah, liberal white women, just like Malcolm said, just like Malcolm X said. Old white liberal women are the death of America, lady, and you're part of it.
She probably wants to talk about Thanksgiving. Or a check.
I just wanna know why you guys support illegal aliens so much. You guys don't fight this hard for our homeless veterans. You guys fight for illegal criminals, but not our homeless veterans. Make that shit make sense. No, cause we like facts?
Is she just standing there?
I'm a pansy, I guess. I'm a pansy.
That's what she wishes it was, shit.
Oreo Express, everybody loves the hat, bro. Everybody loves the hat, let's go. Yeah. I need to get one like this that says trans women are men. Yes.
That's right. Christ is king. This is America, the greatest country in the world.
You gotta set me up with the dude that made this, so I can have one made that says trans women are men. Got to. Yeah, they want illegals here so they can vote. So they can illegally vote. And it works for pennies on the dollar.
Oh my gosh, do not tell me this is her, like, beta husband or something. For real.
She's so triggered, bro.
He came over here looking all weird at Tommy.
Is that your IQ?
King Tommy.
Is that your IQ? Oh, shit.
You're wearing covid masks outside.
Outside, yeah.
Ridiculous.
Christ is king, fuck that witchcraft, yeah. Christ is king.
Well, if you are vaxxed, you should keep that mask on, cause we don't wanna breathe that same air.
Yes, sir. No room for Muslims in this country. No room for Islam in America. Room for Islam in America.
Yeah, Muslims again is a nationality, ethnicity, they're good, but Islam, the religion is not.
They give them our taxpayer money to vote for Democrats.
Not even a religion, man. It's a death, it's a hate.
But they're doing witchcraft. This is a Christian country, fuck that witchcraft shit. Just gotta go.
Ridiculous.
Christ is king.
It's embarrassing.
It's already too late to sign up. I got here like right at six o'clock, right when it started. Diaper face alert. We got some diapers.
That's embarrassing. Wearing covid masks, white fuckers.
And they're probably triple vaxxed, bro. At least. No, there's no room for Muslims in this coun- no room for Islam in America. No room for Islam in America.
This is one of those guys that watches David Hite.
Islam and America do not go together. Islam and America is like water and oil. They do not mix. Oh, it is.
This guy's a complete moron, bro. When did you lose your brain?
Islam takeover of America. I am very white, yes, I am. Nah, shit, this is conquered people, conquered land, bro. We took this land. We were the strongest, we settled this land, and we made this land into the greatest, biggest country in the world.
Why do these liberal cucks always come out first saying, "I'm a veteran"? So you're not a patriot of this fucking country, though.
You're a vet that supports illegal aliens in our country?
You ain't a patriot of this country, not at all.
You're white fuck.
You hate this country. You don't have to get out of my face, bro. You don't, you probably haven't met me before.
I like what? Turds? Why did you go to the smallest one? Why didn't you get in my face? Are you talking about black people like that, bro? That's crazy. Oh, you're talking about yourself, bro. Talking about yourself? I'm not gonna back that no more. You're in my space now, bud. Do, do you think men can become women? You don't wanna do that, buddy. Do you think men can magically just change their gender and turn into a woman? Put that mask on, cause your breath stinks, bro.
And we don't want your vaccinated breath in our face, dude.
Men can become women.
Keep your vaccinated fucking death jabbing to yourself.
Once in a while, at least. When did you get indoctrinated so bad that you just lost it all?
Yeah, you, you ain't a patriot, that's for damn sure.
Not in the slightest.
Revoke this faggot's fucking card, dude.
When did you?
Revoke his vet card, he doesn't deserve anything.
Are you one of them transgenders? Is that why you're crazy?
Real Americans don't fucking wanna pay for your shit.
No. Why do you support illegal immigration in our country? I really wanna know. Why do you, why do you guys? Ah, don't do it, bro! Don't do it, bro! Damn, you're fucked up. Don't fucking do it! See, you can't take words, so you guys turned to violence. Why did you go to the smallest one?
You get triggered by words, you're emotional, dude. You're more woman than man, that's funny.
Oh, shit, oh, you stink, bro. You need to brush your teeth. I'm not gonna back up no more. You're in my space now, bud. I'm just asking a serious question. Why do you guys advocate so hard? You're in my fucking space now. You don't wanna do that, buddy. You do not wanna get in my space.
But if we got lizard brains, you got a fish brain, bro.
Put that mask on, cause your breath stinks, bro. You gotta brush your teeth. You gotta brush your teeth. Once in a while, at least.
You're like a three cell of Meba.
Once in a while, at least. Stay out of my face, bitch, dawg. Not in the slightest.
As soon as we get the real ID passed, then they're gonna not care about immigrants no more than illegal aliens no more.
It's always stolen valor, these people. Alright, you're boring. Why do you support illegal immigration?
This dude's been on, he was a tester, he was a tester for Prozac before he even came out in the eighties.
For illegal aliens. Damn, this fogged up, my guy.
Did you know?
Why, I'm just curious. What's so good about illegal aliens?
He saw the live and he's like, "I'm gonna swing by real quick." Yep. Even this guy too, he, he saw the live, he said, "I'm gonna swing by too."
I'm just asking a serious question. Why do you guys advocate so hard for illegal alien criminals to stay in this country?
But if we got lizard brains, you got a fish brain.
You can't answer, um, cause you don't have a good reason, besides wanting cheap. Labor, pennies on the dollar, basically slave labor. You guys are the modern day Nazis. You guys are the modern day KKK. You guys want free labor, so you guys want, and you guys want these illegals to be able to come in and vote for Democrats. That's the only reason why you guys want them to stay. Right? SSRIs don't lie.
It's like, she's still over here doing voodles.
SSRIs don't lie, bro. SSRIs do not lie. Alright, you're boring. It's not easy. It's literally, oh shit.
This dude's been on-
What's up, big dog? Hell, yeah, thank you, bro.
You guys should mask kiss, that would be great.
Yes, sir. You outta here? Alright, bro. Be safe. Yeah, thank you, bro. I love you, bro. Did you know, I did know that trans women are men? Yes, sir! We got a fan that stopped just to say what's up. Oh, shit! He saw the live, he had to come say what's up. Let's fucking go. I love it. Excuse me, sir.
I was like, it'll get good in a minute once this meeting gets over, cause there's so many liberals here. It's everyone. It's literally like ninety-nine percent liberals here, so as soon as this door opens and this meeting's over, it's gonna be on. I mean, a lot of them are just gonna run to their car and just yell Nazi or whatever, cause that's all they do. All they do is just say some dumb shit they saw on CNN.
I didn't do that, yes, yes, yeah. He, he, he wasn't happy about that question, I don't think. I'm not moving backwards for nobody. Did you know that trans women are men? It's that easy. It's, it's literally, oh shit, I did not mean.
My hands.
This is the home of Tina Kotex, Tina Kotex version of the film.
Ooh, Philly. Shout out Philly. He said that he would join Antifa if they paid him. Yeah. Yeah, God bless Donald Trump. God bless ICE. God bless America, baby. Let's fucking go! ICE is nice. ICE is nice.
It's gonna be popping. Yep. Is the chat working? For some reason, it's just not going.
It's neither. This is a, this is a winning patriotic American stream, that's what it is.
It says, "Oh, there we go, Becky, I see you."
Thanks. I gotta run back to the progress.
Done passed off, logo. Liberal hell. That shit got triggered and I didn't even say nothing to her. This is the home of Tina Kotex, Tina Kotex lives in Salem? The flood of trans. I don't know why these people fight so hard for illegals. Cop thought it was a debate. It wasn't a debate, it was a simple question.
Oh, him too. I'm like, this guy's horrible. Literally why I tell my kids to get out of school as fast as possible.
God bless ICE and God bless Donald Trump. Yes, sir! I think they said- Can I answer the question? I'm, I'm restreaming the, the restream of the restream. This is, this is gross. If we were in there, it would just be, we would just be in front of a, um, a TV, just like this. I know, I'm just fucking. Have a good night, though. I know you guys ain't gonna answer it. I've asked a bunch of you guys and none of you guys will give me an answer. but I know you guys know the truth I know it in your heart you know the truth streamception he knows streamception that was hard to say thanks to will's alternate account for joining as well trump baby let's go hey girl every year there's that new order to ban rolls also that doesn't make any sense guns don't kill people people do please go ahead and offer your testimony and after we're going to have to pass
are humans of Portland from Louisiana right now
oh let's go for what
I don't know
we let the truckers them truckers pull up they stick his thieves bro
like we need it we need it
my chat said will would have sprayed her will would have sprayed her that's fucking funny
oh little crier
illegals gotta stop taking our benefits our tax dollars our medical dollars racking up hella debt in our hospitals using them as primary cares what up bro can you tell me why you support illegal immigration so much
you're delusional as fuck
why you guys support illegal aliens invading our country
look at how ridiculous he looked look at how ridiculous he looked
spit on me why do you support illegal alien criminals
you're literally a carbon cutout of a fucking liberal
why did you support Biden who was taking showers with his own daughter who cares how much money you guys show me where he's been convicted of a sex crime show me where he's been convicted of a sex crime
this dude's a coward he just spits on people because he can't use his fucking brain and he doesn't have one fucking stupid you can't use your words you can't use your words yeah that's how you are
I thought you guys were all inclusive of
little beta cuck little beta cuck you probably get pegged by your fucking girl dude
where are the kings
no he doesn't no he doesn't he doesn't yeah he does it he never fucks you ever
make trump king trump twenty twenty eight trump twenty twenty eight
what is a woman what is a woman
trump twenty thirty-two trump twenty thirty-two
it's easy
trump until he dies trump until he dies king trump and then JD JD let's go
you just bring up trump because that's the only thing in your life even care about you got tds
that's the problem
so what you're lucky I don't have my king trump shirt on
yeah they're using all of our tax dollars for illegal invaders all
forever baby
illegal aliens take up like ninety-three thousand dollars a year per person okay if you answer my question first did you know that trans women are men
god bless ICE and god bless America baby let's fucking
no they're biological men I'm asking are you are you a science denier are you a scientist
get that damn voodoo ritual shit out of here
we're going into women's faces and stealing medals from biological women you know transgender men transgender women that are men have taken over nine hundred medals from women why does that matter I work every day trump until he dies who gives a fuck how much I'm making I'm out here to get rid of the radical transgender ideology we gotta wipe the radical transgender ideology off wipe them out
wood chipper
yes I do it's going on your guys' transgender medicine and your transgender surgeries gender medicine and your transgender surgery if you can't answer my advances and all that dumb shit you only do aliens and that's gotta stop
yeah you denying science are you denying science
are you a science denier no I'm sick of mentally ill men going into women's faces and stealing medals from bi women you know transgender men transgender women that are men have taken over nine hundred oh yeah you know most presidents have made alterations of the white house and we're not even using tax dollars to do it
that's what I mean are you making you're out here giving us this you are making less
yeah like who even cares
I'm out here to get rid of the radical transgender ideology we gotta wipe the radical transgender ideology off the planet wipe them out yes I do it's going on your guys' transgender medicine and your transgender surgery and all that dumb shit illegal aliens and that's gotta stop oh yeah you know most presidents have made alterations
that's the dumbest thing ever you just watch cna go watch cna if you think you're smart and all you do is regurgitate old news you don't think for yourself you regurgitating views of pundits all you're doing is regurgitating pundit views you don't even have a thought of your own you don't have a thought of your own you don't have a thought of your own
yeah we gotta shut down
you are closed minded you are closed minded
why is that bad
no no hang on hang on you're closed minded no one cares my stream doesn't give a shit what you have to say because you're dumb as fuck for real
no how do you know
that fucking cuck beta right there little bitch boy
and how do you know it's unnecessary you know giving illegals our tax dollars is unnecessary and not maybe it's way more unnecessary than fixing the capital building you know giving illegals our tax dollars is unnecessary
they're always like that
illegals our tax dollars is unnecessary and not maybe it's way more unnecessary than fixing the capital building are you so you'd rather give illegal
there's no such thing as trannies trannies just the king trannies are just the king
invaders our tax dollars rather than illegal aliens invaders our tax dollars making our country look better
at least you're not what representing or standing up for are they still speaking
trans women are men did you guys know that why are you guys always so violent
so easily triggered by words
you did yeah trans women are men she said we should
I'm scared of you but I'm gonna come right up to you no that's not how
oh jeez don't play oh she definitely voted for Kamala Harris
that's what I'm wondering they already shut it right like it's over they already taken down that they must be letting them out somewhere else huh
call nine one
like that's freaking weird because they were down by the Logan
it's only seven thirty I don't even think it's in
room down by it's on the other side the lower doors just go check it out it's two feet concrete
sally ray streets tommy street why are you guys always so violent why do you guys like we we
stacy we love stacy
we use words and you guys use violence just
when I left the other night stacy was down there just giving it to him that shit was hilarious I don't know right now but the other night when when I left then she was down there I was watching her like the whole time
oh you wanna say nothing now okay that's funny
let's go cheers man I think her voodoo wasn't working so she had to pick it up the voodoo didn't work so she she ran out of spice or whatever the fuck she was smoking you cannot fix her she's not fixable
we love tommy
no you can't she is a loser
oh they shut up will's still ranting his followers are dropping you please do me a favor and go unfollow
my brother and I were watching him and
it told me I'm the other brand by the way yeah his his count has already went from three thousand like to
that's fucking awesome I never even thought about doing something like that that's fucking fun
yeah well like that's the cop was kind of explaining it like if you're it's essentially if you feel threatened then you have uh like a
hear that new one that's
not feel threatened and you like have a space around you that is your space you tell them to not like get away If you tell them to not, like, get away from you, get back, step back.
If you guys aren't following dreaded beauty, then you should be. Tommy Streets, Valley Ray Streets.
Yeah, he said, the cops told me, like, cause that guy was, like, yelling to like, come after him and come fight and all this stuff. And then he's coming after me like that. He said, well, did he, like, put his hand on you or anything? And I go, he goes, and you headbutt him first?
It's in, it's in Tim's truck.
Yeah, I hit him first, you know, but he was aggressing me. And, you know, I'm not gonna back up or nothing, so. He flinched towards me like three times. Like, in the video, like, kinda flinches his head towards me. The cop said either one of, any of those times would have been, uh, enough reason to do what I did.
Dreaded beauty one, yeah, Stacy is awesome. She, she gives them hell, guys.
I didn't keep going after him or anything. All that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
He, the cop said that the DA could still go pick it up if they wanted to, but most likely they won't because he write the report, so.
Babe, I love you.
Doesn't wanna press charges anyway.
I see you in the chat, I think. Oh, thank you, Angel. It's been a lot to deal with. We appreciate you so much. I love you, babe. That's funny. They said half the people are talking shit in Will's chat and he's just blocking them all. Maga marches, baby, let's
So those are like, what?
Go. Stacy, I don't know her last, Stacy, I don't know her last name, um, but
No, they didn't, did they?
Uh, one, or I think
Got it real quick.
There's a few others over there if you want.
Breezy, thank you. You cannot fix Mace Face. You cannot fix Mace Face. My chat keeps saying I can fix Mace Face.
Oh, no, this is a hard to make
You cannot fix Mace Face.
They all use Amazon, okay?
They all work at Amazon.
That's what I'm saying.
Will's still ranting. His followers are dropping.
Oh my god. Enforce laws against ICE agents. Traffic laws.
Okay, so these are all different. I thought it was all the same one.
If you guys are following P Town Patriot Eighty Two, please do me a favor and go unfollow. Oh, yeah. Yeah, their, his, his count has already went from three thousand like to uh, less than seven, or twenty-seven hundred, so he's losing them quick. So he's losing them quick. Fuck Mercado. I can't do it no more. I can't smile no more.
Jeez. Nothing going on.
Forgive your mother. Hey, send
I was like, I wish the freaking voodoo was still here at least. We had something to look at.
Forgive your mother, will you send it to me? Cause I get a lot of tax Can I ask you guys why you guys support illegal immigration so much? It's hard to keep up. Will you DM it to me? I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna follow you back right now so that you can DM me. Tommy Boy says, no illegal aliens.
It's a new DEI.
Absolutely for illegal. Yeah, deport every illegal. Next, say it best. Why are you guys fighting so hard for illegal aliens? Why are you guys fighting so hard for We love Tommy dearly, but not queerly.
I was like, I knew, a lot of them, if they come out single, they're not gonna really say anything. Maybe a little bit, but
Watch the chat. About the song. I'm almost to the point where I might have to say revoke the nineteenth. It's coming to that. Forgive your mother.
I'm like, that shit's hilarious, dude. Let's go.
I already follow you, so you're good.
Let's go. We love it.
Good to see you guys.
Yes.
This is my home.
The white women are looking for cooks and cleaners. They don't wanna do it on their own. I like your hat. Do you support illegal aliens in this country? Legal immigrants?
There you go. There you go. I love you, bro.
Alright. Did you know that trans women are men? Okay, that's a good answer. That's better than no.
Base.
Have a good night. Base. Have a good night, bro.
Yep. He got a turkey hat on. Right? He's gonna be saying something crazy with the turkey hat on.
Sandy from Salem.
Hello. Do you support illegal aliens in this country?
There's so many faces up there, sometimes I don't
Oh, I know, I know, but I recognize all of you guys.
Nice to see you.
Yeah.
They're coming, they're coming.
Can you guys hear it?
They're gonna start coming soon. What? ICE is nice.
Forgive your mother. The devil is P Town Patriot. Hands freezing. He said, yeah, that's what he was saying the whole Right here. He was saying, right here. He was saying, everybody that was talking shit was like Oh, that's a fake account.
Except for the illegals that came out. Oh, here we are, here we are. What the heck? How did she go back around?
Crazy. How did you? Did you teleport? No, I wasn't talking to you. Did you teleport? Hey, did you know that trans women are men? Like to spit on people. Like to spit on people, you loser. Don't you let some illegals come and live in your house, motherfucker?
I know some.
Fuck Antifa. Fuck trans Antifa too.
Griffin's been arrested again?
It's still going. It's still going. They're all sitting in there.
And it's funny when I stream, I get so many in touch with people in my lives. They're like, these
Guys just got out of jail like yesterday.
No idea what they're talking about. Like, FDT, FDT.
Oh my gosh.
I like that song.
Yeah, it always keeps you around the same people in a way.
YouTube, at least for me, just puts everyone
A glitch. They're like, that was a glitch.
Once I see my hat.
How the hell, dude, she's too big and too slow. There is no way she went back by us or threw around and came back that fast to the thing. That was like total glitch. Total glitch in the matrix. What the hell?
Alright, let me switch hands.
Who? Who you talking about? Freaking P Town?
I can't do it no more. Bless Charlie Kirk.
I can't smile no more.
What movie was that from?
They're afraid to come out by themselves.
It's like I'm smiling. Smile more. I can't smile no more. What movie was that from? Dude, what's mine say? Dude. Hello, can I ask you guys why you guys support illegal immigration so much? Why do you guys support illegal aliens? No sanctuary cities. We gotta shut down sanctuary cities and send all illegals home. Why do you guys fight so hard for illegal invaders to take over our country? No, they're illegal criminals and liberal white women like you are the death of this country. Absolutely pathetic. Malcolm X said it best. Why are you guys fighting so hard for illegal aliens?
So how the hell are you six foot two and you're like fucking ninety-four pounds?
I don't understand it. They, the, what it's, it's all been white liberal women that's came out of there, so it has to be true. White liberal women are voting us into oblivion. They're literally
They're calling you Mexican.
Yeah, well, congratulations. Us into oblivion.
Ba 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 ba, Indian.
I, I, I'm almost to the point where I'm I have to say revoke the nineteenth. It's coming to that. And I don't wanna say that. I don't wanna say that, but it should go back how it used So do you guys want the illegal criminals here or do you guys want? To be towards, one be towards, one household vote, you know? Do you know the difference? And you have to have some kind, and you have to have some kind of stake in the country.
This dude has a smaller waist than his fucking sister. Can you believe that?
Like, like Definitely your IQ. You have to own property or have a business or be in that God bless you guys. I hope you guys find Jesus. God bless you guys.
I hope you find some bacon. Holy shit, dude, you need some meat on those bones, boy.
Sandy, it's Sandy.
Let's go.
Do you know what a woman is? Yeah, you know, my mom's a woman.
Find some bacon. Holy shit, dude, you need some meat on those bones, boy.
Let's fucking go. It's like the fourth person tonight, guys. It's like the fourth person that's seen the live and came out. My mom's a woman too, bro. Let's fucking go. She got Dr. Kaiser.
Good to see you guys.
You too. That is capable of giving birth. I love you guys. I see you guys. The white You guys ain't sneaky. Cooks and cleaners. God bless you guys. Women are looking for cooks and cleaners. They don't wanna do it on their own. I like your hat. Do you support illegal aliens in this country? When they were smiling up there, I think They can't help us. Legal Legal, legal immigrants, we love legal immigrants, but no more sanctuary cities for illegal aliens, right? I love you, bro. Have a blessed Tonight. Hey, did you know that trans, hey, did you know that trans women are men? It's, 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 okay, that's a good answer. That's better than No. Have a good night. Based.
Yeah, dude, it looks like there's a bunch of illegals here.
Have a good night, bro.
We should call ICE and tell them there's a bunch of illegals here.
He was based. I don't know what he was doing.
We need to call nine one one. I just saw some more illegals.
Is he in there trolling? I hope so. With that hat on, he has to be. Hello. Are you, do you support illegal aliens in this country?
I thought it would already be done by now, though, like seven thirty. Cause they only had six things.
It was work. I was dirty.
Shut the fuck up. It said six to eight, though.
If they came here illegally, don't we need to enforce our border laws and send them home? I'm very happy right now, but I'm not gay in my home anyway. Trigger this Alright, have a blessed night.
That's our favorite.
God bless the PD. Now, yes. Police departments, not police heroes. Why do you guys support illegal aliens so much?
You're always at the donor shop.
That's what I said earlier. Kaiser, I think Kaiser's got more cops than Salem.
In our country. Can you answer that? Can you answer why it's all white liberal women?
Kaiser police is, uh, used as a transition place.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, where?
Oh, yeah, they're everywhere.
Oh, that's Chase.
Boom.
Oh, he got the good angle. We love ICE. We love ICE. God bless ICE.
ICE is nice.
God bless ICE.
God bless ICE. Let's go.
Do you support, do you support deporting illegal aliens out of our country? Do you support deporting the aliens out of our country? Why not? Why do you guys fight so hard for illegal? Will's about to lose it mentally.
You should fight for Americans.
Fight for the homeless veterans.
That's right.
Always right, dude. Let's go.
A thousand bucks and a ticket home? That is due process.
They're super weak minded. Every person that's came out of there has been
Yep, that's right.
White liberal retard. That's a pretty due process. A thousand dollars and a plane ticket. Oh, that's the one I just talked to. Fight for our homeless vets. God bless our homeless vets.
Oh my god. Look at this freak.
Crazy. How did you? That's Joe Dirt's mom.
What a freak. Oh my god.
Teleport? No, I wasn't talking to you.
They're getting ready to leave though. Like ten minutes. Oh my god, there's the dude that was crying.
Teleport, teleport. I just seen you.
He's right here. He has the bridge. He's like sitting in the second row right here. Dude was already crying on camera.
Women are men. Trans women are men.
See him right there? Dude was crying.
Trans women are men. Like to spit on people. Like this That trans women are men? Spit on people, you loser. Why don't you let some illegals illegals come and live in your house, mother
Dude, guaranteed. They're like, hey, be careful. They're all MAGA.
Why don't you bring, motherfucker? Why don't you bring some illegals to your house and let them sleep in your bedroom?
They can't even take words, man.
You go first.
See, look, first thing, first thing, look. They were just gonna come out. They stopped them. They were literally just gonna walk and come out and they stopped them. They started pointing at us and telling us. Yeah.
I'll get it. You can say it right there. Oh, yeah, no, I got it. I can just put it in my little container. You out of here? Yeah, they already don't talk.
See, and they, they say white people can't have afros. See, and they, they say white people can't have afros.
Everyone can.
We love Tommy.
There are exceptions, yes.
We love Tommy.
Like they never sauce them if they don't think white people could have afros.
Did you get him to talk at all? I look honestly.
Ooh, it's about to happen. It's about to happen.
No, and like I said, there's.
He doesn't know.
Ultimately, what we want is, is to build a bridge, uh, a dividing building for dialogue. We can uh, have meaningful change and the only way we can do that is have a conversation, uh, have meaningful change.
We're here to.
Patriot Americans.
They shouldn't, shouldn't regard this if it's uh.
Yep. Yep, ICE is nice.
But he's always give you the best way to avoid violence.
Yep, kick all the immigrants out, build the wall and lock the door for fifty years.
Help and dialogue, yes sir. And that's ultimately whatever I know, that's what I owe you. And always, my president said, always.
Why do you guys support?
Love the hat, bro. I fucking love it.
Why do you guys support illegal aliens in this country?
Go, bro. I fucking love you.
Even heavens got borders.
I haven't seen that. It's an easy yes or no question.
Real men stand up for the truth.
They make them custom, so I'll try to get some for you guys.
No, we're not here to cause havoc. We're, we wanna ask, why do you support illegal immigration rather than?
Real men stand up for the truth.
Have a blessed night, bro. I'll see. Alright, have a blessed night, bro. I'll see you later. Yes, sir. Yeah, for sure. We definitely will. He's a good dude, bro. God bless Charlie Kirk.
Trans women are men.
They're taking our income. They're taking free housing, free medical, free food. Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Fifty percent of illegal immigrants are on food stamps.
I'm on. Time out. Time out.
You can look it up.
Whitehouse dot gov.
We love common sense out here. JD.
You guys eat into our.
We love you, bro.
You guys eat into our task.
What's your name?
Hell no, he's not illegal. That's why he's here. How do you know that? Because you're here supporting illegal.
They're Irish.
You're here supporting illegal.
Yeah, Harriet for sure. JD, yep, it was safe.
No, we're not. And we're moving out of the way for people too. Move out of the way for people too. You're not doing nothing here, little.
They are absolutely, they broke the federal law coming into this country.
Kick all illegals out. Get all illegals out of our country, America, baby.
I'm glad you're here. That's amazing.
We send them back.
If they have green cards, they're not illegals. What kind of dumb argument was that? We said we support legal immigration. We're against illegal immigration.
Our illegal, their things, they bring drugs into our country. I'm not on this.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Do you hear all the facts? You, you hear all the facts he's spewing and you say he's uneducated? He's spewing facts and you say he's uneducated? All you do is have beliefs. We have facts. You have an American flag and you support illegals?
Supporting illegal invaders?
I just, I.
We're being invaded by illegal people. They're stealing our everything.
Illegal immigration, a hundred percent.
I'm Native American.
It's the illegal criminals that I don't want here.
Why do you have to always go with some racist shit? Why do you guys always go racist?
God bless you. So do you guys want for illegal criminals here?
Because I have brownish skin or brown colored skin that you think that I'm an illegal? That's what you were gonna go to, right?
No. I'm gonna say everybody that's here that is not a Native American is an immigrant.
Oh, that's what you're gonna say?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna say and that's the truth.
No, it ain't. Conquered people conquered land. This is the great in the world. White Christian civilization saved the world. We need more white babies in America. We need more white babies in America.
It's the lollipop.
Kick all the illegals out. And we need more white ba- Christ is king.
The lo- the lollipop kill. We got the lollipop kill in the house.
Talking about.
That is definitely her IQ.
And Creeper, and Creeper, and Creeper. Little pussy boy, little pussy boy. We deal with this all the time, bro. Your little flashlight. That's a baby light, bro.
God bless you.
You gotta get some real lumens in there, bro. That's a baby light for a baby boy like you. You need some meat on those bones, boy.
Psycho, yeah, he's got those SSRIs. He got those.
I did. We love America. America's the greatest country in the world.
They are. Do you know what a woman is? Yes.
Deport this fucking wand right now.
My mom's a woman too, bro! Let's fucking go.
Give a shit.
She gave birth to me too.
If you don't like our country, you don't support America.
Adult human female that is capable of giving birth.
You don't like America. You support illegal immigrants just because they're brown, just because they are your race, you think that they get to be here? That's dumb. So what? So what?
God bless you guys.
No, I'm not.
God bless you guys.
Doesn't matter. That's racist. What you just said is racist. He said that because I'm brown, I'm gonna get pulled over. You're a racist, bro. You're a racist. You're a racist. They're, they're, they're arresting all white people, black people, brown people. All they're dumb.
They can't help but smile.
I'm Native American, you stupid fuck. You're a dumb.
Yeah.
Some racist piece of shit, dude. Deport this wand. If you got your immigration card, they should revoke it and cut your ass on a boat back home. For real. Oh, what's up?
My mom sent me.
Good.
She's like, is that your brother?
What the fuck is up?
So if a trans woman's dad transitions, is it their?
She's like Tommy. I'm like.
That confused the fuck out of me. That's a lot of retardation in one sentence.
Why do you guys support illegal invaders?
Put ten men on an island.
Why do you guys support women, literal women?
All men. Yeah, all men. All men. That's a good one. We need to call nine.
They don't have rights.
Look, there's.
They don't have rights.
We just wanna have.
The dumbest argument ever, dude. That's why you need to be deported, bro, cause you don't support America.
They have to come through us.
This is our home, bro. This is our home. And illegals.
Ridiculous, dude.
Twenty million illegals came in under Biden. That's a low estimate. Our, our country's not built for that. Illegal criminals.
Dude's embarrassing.
It was, it was work. It was work. I was dirty.
They broke into our country.
Shut the fuck up. Shut the fuck up.
Is Tommy gay? I'm very happy right now, but I'm not gay in a homo kind of way.
What's up?
Trigger this. Hey, what up, bro? God bless the PDs.
Yeah, that's so funny, dude. My whole family is Mexicans, Indians, white people. I got every race in my family, dude.
I like some of the PDs.
We support illegal immigrants. We love immigrants.
There's a lot of them that are.
Like even my nephew's dad is illegal and we don't want him here either. Doesn't matter.
Hey, you guys, you guys got any?
I just severely saw you too. What's up?
Spare donuts? I was like, just go. Yeah, hey, you guys got a spare donut? I got the munchies.
Sit here for two hours waiting for this to end.
Oh, that's Chase.
This is all he does is he's a true denier, you're a fact denier.
Oh, he got the good angle, bro!
Tampon, Kotak.
We love ICE. God bless ICE. We love ICE. God bless ICE. We love ICE. Do you support deporting illegal aliens out of our country? Do you support deporting aliens out of our country?
They don't have a social security number.
Why not? Why do you guys fight so hard for illegal?
They don't have a tax ID number or anything.
You should fight for America.
Fight for the homeless veterans. If they, if they self deport, they have a chance of coming back on their own. Hey, what's up, bro? How you doing?
Fifty percent of liberal women are on SSRIs.
The amount of money they're putting in is way less than the amount they're making.
Baba Booey, what's up?
We gotta support one, two.
Democrats.
And three. At least every, at least every hour. We gotta deport at least five pawns every hour.
No, she can't hear legally.
Fight for our homeless vets. God bless our homeless vets. God bless our vets. What the?
If I go to another country, are they gonna give me aid? If I go, if I.
Freak is that?
You're so dumb. You're the dumbest idiot, bro.
That's Joe Dirt's mom. Oh, they're still in there, you guys.
Dude, you can see CNN sent it even. Fucking idiot. Yeah. Support Americans. Support Americans.
And there's gonna be some triggered illegals out here pretty soon. You guys got a donut? I need to refuel, bro. I'm just, I'm just fucking, I'm just playing. I don't like donuts. I don't really like donuts unless I got milk. Hey, do you guys support deporting all illegal aliens? Did you know that trans women are men? Tell them I was just joking about the donuts, bro.
My dad, what, 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 what if, what if she had? What is the difference in her, in their, in their long ways to get out here?
And her dad came illegally, but he ended up working it out.
Hey, where's the humble boys?
He needs some. He needs some milk. He needs some milk.
I mean, I'm not even well educated on any of this, but I can tell you right now that you're wrong. They don't get real help. That's crazy.
All your beliefs are based on your emotions. That makes you emotional and that means you're a bitch. That means you're a bitch, bro. You're the, you're a bitch, bro. Complete moron, bro. You're a complete moron. You're a complete moron. You gotta get moron in there, bro. You gotta get moron in there. All you do is deny facts. It doesn't matter if I had all the facts in the world, bro.
And they stop them, they start pointing at them.
Yep.
Thousand dollars, dude. Think about it. I also have the chance to do it. Chance to come back legally.
That situations like me, single mom who just received child support and has two kids, doesn't have food stamps, doesn't have any medical.
Losers.
They're just radical leftists. They're not, liberals aren't left enough.
Building a moat.
Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Henry. Let's go!
You said that there was like a meeting of something that they had here?
It was a city council meeting, uh, they had like six things on the agenda. Uh, one of the things was to expand the sanctuary city laws. Uh, one of the kind of key points was to make it harder for ICE to be able to make arrests, like when people are shopping at Walmart or whatever. Yeah, so they want them to not be able to go get them with their.
Tommy doesn't pay rent, he's just paying his. So rent free in Will's head.
I wonder how, I'm wondering how that's gonna work out. Especially with the private, especially with the private business service.
White liberal women need their Sancho's.
Like show. Show her my pinned video. Show her. My pinned video.
Just about, aren't you?
He actually got X's Twitter?
Yeah.
I'm a dinosaur still, so.
Yeah, I just got it. I mean, I had it old, but. I just started using it. I only use it cause X is like free speech.
So we were thinking about going. I don't wanna go alone, though.
Like Friday or Saturday. To come fight. It's gonna happen very fast. I'm gonna roll up.
When he saw that motherfucker, I was like, that's it. I'm going down there.
What's up? What's up?
Did you guys go to college in Oregon? Did you guys go to college?
We care if you know our names or whatever, dude.
Yeah, I've already been doxxed by you fucking retards, so it don't matter.
I'm like all of my.
They destroyed my car, they attacked me.
That's what we gotta do.
Doxed me.
Expensive. This is iPhone twelve. Hell, this is like fucking, did you eat yourself to death? Two hundred bucks maybe or something.
You don't know what iPhones look like?
This is it.
Yeah, this S twenty-five. We got the S twenty-five in the house. I got the iPhone in my pocket.
Useless people, useless.
This guy dresses like this. He thinks it makes him look like he's a badass or something, but he ain't.
I like how I am. I like my ADHD.
Dude's a chump. Dude's a chump.
Because we really wanna know why you guys support illegal so much.
I don't see how that.
Yeah, mind you, old. And this isn't even an iPhone. This is a Samsung.
Twenty-five. We got the S twenty-five in the house. I got the iPhone in my pocket.
This guy dresses like this. He thinks it makes him look like he's a badass.
No, no. I like how I am. I like my ADHD. At least I don't have psychosis of the brain.
Liberal white women, death of America.
No, you guys literally think men can be women and you think we're crazy. I don't see how that. Oh, I believe. You believe that illegal aliens should be in our country. I know that, otherwise you wouldn't be here. You believe in these sanctuary city bullshit. Oh, then what are you guys here for?
Yeah, cause your family don't love you.
Liberal white women, death of America. Liberal white.
EBT FAs. EBT Fas.
Oh no, F A F O.
Yeah, cause your family don't love you. Oh. EBT Fas. EBT Fas.
It's like, these are how these soy latte motherfuckers dress.
Almost to seventeen. Let's fucking go! Fat shaming is compassionate counseling.
I mean, you guys are boring. I just had to put the cigarette out. I mean, you guys are boring.
In case I never see you again.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. Yeah, for sure. Thank you guys for coming out here. Yes, sir. You too. Have a blessed night, guys. Yeah, we will. We're probably not gonna be here for super long. Oh, never. That's their job.
Because I know you're a science nerd.
Oh, you don't know me very well, bro. Jesus is the king deporter.
You have a fucking mask on and you're outside. I can make all the assumptions. That tells me everything I need to know. I'm not assuming.
Alright, we'll see you later.
Not assuming, it's just...
So I'm sure we'll be back, I'm sure we'll be back out here again eventually.
Like, I normally do have a little face mask on when it's cold, too.
I'm hot all the time, too.
I'm not riding the unicycle or anything, so I'm not as cold anyway. My hands are free.
Mace faces in here saying, "Come, come to our side." He wants, he wants the toad to... He wants the toad to sign the hat, or sign the hat, or sign the sign.
Yeah, boring.
That's not his sign.
Chat's like, boring!
I know. Oh, we all took a little bit of stuff, but they took... Him, him and, him and Alex, yeah. He's the one that tackled that dude once he started spraying. He got sprayed full in the face and still tackled that motherfucker.
Yeah, I know. They were recording in his car and shit, yeah.
But the guy that was cleaning, he did a... Dude was job cleaning up the graffiti off of...
Today? Oh, yeah, I didn't see that.
You didn't? They gave them a bad time.
Oh, it was, uh, T- uh, T- T-
Got himself an arch...
And the dude from Canada. They were removing graffiti.
And they gave them a bad time. Mace faces there.
Yeah, I know. They were recording in his car and shit.
I know, I saw that. That was great.
That would clean her up, though.
We thought he was gonna be dead. It was, that water is cold in the summer. That water is cold as fuck in the summer. And he's still got caught.
And he's still got caught. Yeah, because you can't leave that island.
So he said, oh... The link code John said Tommy got himself, got himself an arch enemy.
Joe's throwing a necklace.
I already got one of them to swim across after trying to rock.
I know, I saw that. That was great. And he made it.
I tried to ask.
Yeah, we thought you were...
I don't see why you can't. You can lie, it's a, it's a public building.
That water is cold in the summer. That water is cold as fuck in the summer, bro. Trust me. And it was the middle of the night? And he still got caught.
There's only one way in and one way out.
The frog just wants to steal the flag back.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Is there still, I think there's still people in there. There's still a bunch of people in there. They didn't all come out. She was like, "You can't livestream in here." When I went to get some water, she was like, "You can't livestream." And I was like, I tried to ask. I don't see why you can't. You can lie, it's a, it's a public building. It's a, it's a public building. I can record, I can livestream. Yeah, I'm just recording, yeah. I started, yes, there's no difference.
I'm fucking sick of this shit, dude.
I like, I like the fact that...
Moon Fairy Andrea, hello, Andrea. Seth Todd and Mace Face are in Wheelschat. Yeah, I know, that's what I heard. It's a public law, but yeah, I can go there anytime I want. He won't let, I told him I'm gonna ask you every time you go by.
Liberate airborne, that's what we need.
At least every one of you brought enough.
Oh, yeah.
I like Ray says, "Shower, Billy Ray says, are you touching your head? Can I give you a headache?"
That's so funny. He's like, "Why are you giving yourself a headache, man?"
Big deal, I'll go.
Tommy, fuck that piece of shit, Richard.
Fuck.
Richard. He deserves worse, man.
Richard, yeah. I fuck Richard, bro. He's a piece of shit. Yeah, fuck Richard.
Right. ICE is nice.
People said I went too hard on him. I don't think I went as bad.
Ah, should've got a Red Bull.
Yeah, exactly. He knows what the fuck he's doing.
And dad, boys can be the daddies. That's right.
Georgia, baby. I, I wish I had twenty-one thousand dollars.
Liberal tears.
I would have one wheel out here with me right now, and I don't.
Yes, I do. I worked all day today, buddy. Yeah, and so are you, stupid.
Will poops a chair, man.
He has ice lice.
Ice lice.
I don't know. Fucking weird, dude.
Hey, we're just here to use our voices, though. Please God, sir, he don't... There's like twelve cops. Shower.
Billy Ray says, "Are you, are you touching your head? Can I give you..."
That's messed up.
Like, "Do you have a headache, Chen?"
Yeah. I could've been a... Lot worse to Richard. I could've been a lot more mean.
Like, it's, it is kinda weird. There was only like four cops like ten minutes ago, now there's like twelve.
Liberal white women are the death of America.
I know. You're still tall. Oh, my goodness.
Fuck Antifa and God bless ICE.
Yeah, my kids are all six and over. My twin brother's six and four.
God bless, God bless ICE. God bless ICE. God bless ICE. God bless ICE. We like our ICE like we like it in our soda.
America first.
Fool! More funding for ICE.
Yeah. Hell, yeah. God bless you, boys.
Transmit our women.
Ice lice.
Yes, they are.
Tommy went up to talk to the cops.
Yeah, it does. No, we're not all dying. Nobody's dying from starvation. Yeah, yeah, fucking go get a job. Yes, I do. I worked all day today, buddy. Yeah, and so are you, stupid. No, you're a retard. You think men can become women. Oh shit, that's a lot of cops. Why is there so many cops?
My hands is freezing.
Why is there so many cops? That's a crazy amount of cops. Hey, we're just here to use our voices, though. We don't need that many people. Jeez.
Where did you see the live room?
There's like twelve cops up there.
She watches him and, um, um, Honey Badger Mom and...
Katie?
Yes, and, uh...
Like Cam Higgy? Oh, JD Delay. That's my boy!
No, Vance, JD Vance.
Oh, no. Well, JD Vance is the president, or vice president.
Yes, no, no. He watches a lot of his stuff, too, but no, the other streamer.
Yeah, JD Delay. He's from Eugene. He has like a beard, he wears his hat back around.
Look at all the cops. I wanna go talk to them.
That's what I wear, the other hat, the make pedophiles afraid again.
Dude, we were watching something, uh, last night, and there's a sticker, like someone had zoomed on the sticker, like on the back of the sign, and it's all freaking... What was it? Some advocate group of, uh...
There was nothing close to man.
Here's my prop ass.
But it's a circle sticker, and it's like red and white, and it literally reflects it. Or, um, what Jesus do type thing, but it's literally about protect pedophiles.
That's how Antifa are. They're all pederis protectors.
I didn't do it. Why is there so many of you guys out here? Yeah, oh, yeah. How you guys doing tonight?
Thank God.
We're not doing nothing but talking. I just don't wanna get shot with that thing. That shit hurts.
How do you guys come up with...
Oh, I used to be a criminal. Long, long time ago.
Stay gay. At least y'all ain't having kids. Stay gay.
Sucks.
Please, do the world a favor.
Crowd of mouth breathers.
You guys having a good night? It's nice weather. I just wanted to say hi to you guys. We support you guys, bro. I talk a lot of shit, but it's out of business.
Alright.
Orange spots on it.
I need their face. I think they know. I think they know. They just can't say it.
Real men stand up for the truth.
They got common sense. I can see it in you guys' eyes. Well, most of you guys.
Yup.
Half a man.
It's like, we even owned it here, man. They were all scared and had to get walked out to their car and everything.
She seemed nice. I didn't wanna say anything.
It's only going half. Hey, you know the trans women are men?
He knows. He knows.
You know the real men stand up for the truth, though, right?
They got sent out here, right?
Right?
But I think some of them know who they are. And I think they like this.
Yeah, it is. What, how is it not? What's not true? Trans women are men. Get the illegals out of our country.
It's pride patrol.
America is the greatest country in the world. Trump is your president.
No more illegal aliens in this country, okay? We gotta deport them all. We gotta deport them all, okay?
Facts don't care about your feelings, like Ben Shapiro said.
He's just mad because he ain't a real man and he can't stand for the truth. That's all.
Cha 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 chia, transfers.
We're gonna deport all illegals and lock the fucking gate.
I think we are all inflatable.
So vile. Why are you guys so fucking evil, bro? You're an evil, vile person, you know that? Charlie Kirk would've still forgave you, bro. He still would've forgave you because he was a better man than you'll ever fucking be. That wasn't nothing close to a man, bro.
You guys are very, very mean.
Yeah. What does that mean?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Too much benefits. I love you too, bro.
That's why you guys killed, that's why you guys killed the best of us, so now you get the rest of us.
That's right.
This OG right here, this...
Nah. I guarantee they all swallow. I guarantee they all swallow.
This is what the mentally ill looks like, right here.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Thank God you guys are not having...
Mentally ill and uninformed.
Stay gay.
Bad Antifa bad.
Stay gay.
Bad Antifa bad.
Stay gay. Just get away from the transgenderism.
Get the hell away from the kids, dude.
Stay away from our children, that's for sure. Children cannot consent to puberty blockers. At least y'all have kids. Stay gay. Please, do the world a favor. Tommy got a little old lady pro to jail. I love it.
That's how it is.
I like your backpack. It's got a lot of orange spots on it. I like the reflectors. I like orange.
They went all the way around the whole thing. That shit is so...
My favorite color.
He's like, "Come on, Chandler, you just did a whole circle, Chandler."
Real men know that men can't become women. Neuter Chandler. Women not dogs.
Oh, I love that. He's in my old neighborhood.
Question of the day. What's up?
I believe it. You know why? Just to piss you off.
Fucking Bob Barker got all our dogs neutered.
Because he doesn't have anybody else.
Bob Barker got all our fucking dogs neutered. Damn!
And you've seen like, uh, probably like Elie Azar's videos, too.
Follow his ex. Brentford Sandy. What's, uh... It's at Brentford Sandy. He came out here to see and hang out. Patriot, let's fucking go!
Like reality?
What's not true? What exactly is not true? Name one thing we've said that's not true. See, you talk shit and then walk away. Yeah, that's not your truth, it's the truth. Facts don't care about your feelings, like Ben Shapiro said.
He's just mad because he ain't a real man and he can't stand for the truth. That's all.
Cha 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 chia, transfers. I think we are all inflatable. Orange spots. Just follow Brent, yeah. Oh, look, they're still here. Hey, can I get a cigarette from you?
That's alright, I got my own. I was just seeing.
How nice you guys were, but you guys aren't nice.
Chick's name, but I went to freaking Alternative Ed with her.
You guys are very, very mean.
Yes, okay, I saw her a couple times and I was like, man.
You guys are bullies.
Have to converse.
No, no. Silence is violence. That's why you guys killed, that's why you guys killed the best of us, so now you get the rest of us. Look at this OG right here, this smelly man. We got a smelly OG out here. Folding like cheap suit.
Like, I can't believe they're still in there, though.
Bad Antifa bad. Bad Antifa bad. Bad, bad Antifa. We had an airsoft gun, and it wasn't even mine. That's nothing, I posted a picture with it, so that's nothing to hide about. He got paid in all kinds of merchandise that people send him. She could be your adopted mom, Tommy. Yeah, he's a, he's a, he's a butt hurt little man, and that's okay.
Sally Ray's giving Chandler a bad time.
Right now? Or, oh, no, this is an old video, yeah. We love Billy Ray. We love Billy Ray! Will's joining Antifa. My chat just said.
I believe it. You know why? Just to piss you off.
Oh, because he doesn't have anybody else.
That's true, too, but just to piss you off.
It would just prove a lot. It wouldn't piss me off, it would just bring out a lot of... Yeah, if it's that easy for him to just say, "Oh, I'm gonna go over here." What up, bro? How you doing? Give me a hug, bro. Nope, this is my first time in Salem. Look, we got a police escort. There's like seven or eight of them up... Nope, this is my first time in Salem. Look, we got a police escort. There's like seven or eight of them up there.
If you guys ever need a place to stay, you can stay.
Well, thank you. I think we're driving back home tonight, but.
I live about fifteen minutes away. And we have great cops.
Yeah, they were nice. The cops were chill.
They are. They're very nice here.
Yeah, they were.
You got some people on your side.
I know, it's pretty amazing. Like, it really is become like a big family, for real. Spending time together outside of, of doing stuff like this is really good for our mental and for, you know, for our group, you know, to bond together even more.
And you add more to your group, yeah. These two jumping up and down.
I can show you guys both my bank accounts.
Okay. Can you write it?
No, wait. Will's trying to say that I have twenty thousand dollars in the bank.
Oh, if you did, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I would be here, but I would be on a one wheel.
Yeah, well, you'd, you wouldn't have to work so hard.
Look, that's my, my chime.
Yeah.
And that's for our, I haven't really used this, like, at all for the past month. It's been at the same. And then, this is my on point, well.
You want me to hose something?
Nah, I got it. I'm double fisting. And this is my on point. Eighteen hundred.
There you go. He's not rich.
And that's gonna go on, on rent where we're at if we don't find a place pretty soon.
That's right.
You know? Well, nine hundred of it. Yeah, yeah. And I think I have like four hundred bucks on my Venmo.
Oh, bless your heart. Keep an upper chin.
Yeah, see, I have four hundred bucks on my Venmo. I am nowhere close. Like, you guys, I've only, like, in the beginning, I, I really was making like six, seven hundred dollars a night in the very beginning. But the last few weeks, the, the most I've made in one night is like three hundred dollars in the last few weeks. And, and that's just because you guys donate. I don't ask you guys for anything.
You don't.
You know? And I definitely don't lie about our situation and our, uh, our trying to move, you know, and definitely not about money. Yeah.
But give up on the one wheel. You don't need it.
Yeah, no, I, I do need a one wheel, but I know my priorities right now are moving. And I'm not gonna spend money nineteen hundred dollars on a one wheel right now when we are in need of moving and we're gonna need the most that we can have, you know?
That's right. That's right. Here comes some people. Immigration.
Legal immigrants are great. Do you know the difference between illegal alien, uh, predators and legal immigrants? Illegal aliens are not the same as legal immigrants. She can hold that sign up as high as she wants. It doesn't make any sense. Cause we love legal immigrants, but they're not here about legal immigrants. They're here about illegal aliens and this stupid sanctuary city bullshit. No, Will's not doing. I mean, that's on him. I, I'm.
I'm not getting any fucking sanctuary. Where are the church, church doors and?
I didn't wanna go online and, uh, have to explain the situation. I was trying to avoid it and just ignore it and just let it go away. But he decided to go online last night and do a live for four hours talking shit to me and then he's mad that I responded to it today. Lola, thank you for the Cash App. I appreciate it. And Michael, thank you.
Hey, don't you be showing your skin, Tommy. No Cash App.
Ah, shit. I'm not an internet prostitute.
But I'm just saying.
I don't take my clothes off.
Thank you guys for whatever you do.
Yes, sir. Tommy TV is on. My day is good. What about you, bud? I love you. My son's probably wanting me to let him spend some money on his video game. Joseph, thank you, brother. Thank you for the donation, Joseph. Pam will own Will in three weeks. Skip to my loo, my darling. Lulu, skip to my loo. Lulu, skip to my loo. Lulu, skip to my loo. Skip to my loo, my darling. Spin City News. He just got monetized on YouTube. Go follow Spin City News on YouTube. He's been a follower from the gi- beginning. And we finally got him, uh, he finally got, uh, monetized. So go follow him and tell him you love him and Tommy sends you. Freedom Compass. Hey, so you guys, on Saturday at three PM, I'm doing a live interview with Freedom Compass. Um, so make sure you guys are tun- turning, tuning in for that. Uh, you can probably find the link on Freedom Compass's YouTube, or I'll post it. I'll, I'll post the link to watch it on my X. I think if there's a link. I don't exactly know how it works yet. But it's gonna be a good. Uh, it's gonna be a good interview. Freedom Compass is a good ass dude. I've been talking to him for a while. You guys support deporting illegal aliens? No more sanctuary city, right? Deport illegals? The drain on our society, right? No more anchor babies? I know, I know you guys are violent. You guys love throwing shit at people, but it's alright. Yeah, I know you guys are. Super violent. I'm not here to be violent, buddy. I'm here to tell you that illegal aliens gotta get the fuck out of our country. That's a fact. That's a fact. Illegal aliens gotta get the fuck out. You came to this country illegally, you're a criminal. Hundred percent. We should not be giving rewards to illegal criminals. Yeah, no. First thing a motherfucker does is break our laws and we're supposed to reward them? It's not how it works.
King Trump, baby.
Who's gonna stop you from doing what? Oh, Trump's gonna do. Port your ass if you're illegal, that's for sure. ISIS. Gonna stop you. Gonna stop you.
You better watch that shit, bro.
He's not illegal. He's not illegal.
Do it. Pull it up. Pull it up. Pull out the receipts.
Show me what he's been convicted of a sexual.
This country legally if you wanna be here. It's that.
I need the proof. I need to see.
What photos?
What photos?
Obey the simple.
Seven to eight. Wow, that's a lot too, huh? That's a lot.
Respect our fucking country.
We have videos of Biden sniffing girls on fucking TV. On national TV, Biden sniffing thirteen year old girls and telling them that they're hot.
You got a serious case of TDS.
Yeah, you're delusional as fuck.
Fucking simple. Fucking simple. I know you guys really don't know what respect is, but you guys should figure it out before you come here.
But Trump is a man of honor. He's not, he's not a pedophile. We know that. If, if Trump was a.
You're literally a carbon cutout of a fucking liberal.
No, just deport all illegals except for the big booty Latinas. The nines and tens can stay, eights and less, they're too late. They gotta go. I'm married, bro, to a beautiful white woman.
You know, that's what a capitalist country is all about.
I'm married to a beautiful white woman, brother.
This dude's a coward. He just spits on people because he can't use his fucking brain. He doesn't have one. Fucking stupid. You can't use your words. You can't use your words.
Yeah, those two ugly tortas definitely gotta go.
Yeah, that's how you are. You little beta cuck. Little beta cuck. You probably get pegged by your fucking zone, man. No, he doesn't. No, he doesn't. He doesn't. He doesn't. He never fucked you ever.
Hit by the door.
He doesn't.
No. I don't wanna see your man tits.
What is a woman? What is a woman? Cause you don't know the answer. It's easy.
Are you illegal? Is that why you're so triggered?
I don't know. Why'd you bring up Trump? Yeah, but I was talking about.
You wanna go get some tacos?
Why you gotta support illegal aliens?
You just bring up Trump because that's the only thing in your life that you even care about. You got TDS. So what? You're lucky I don't have my King Trump shirt on. King Trump, Trump forever, baby.
Oh, probably because they're on the side of the road grilling up tacos.
King Trump. King Trump, Trump forever.
One in a million. They're tortoise.
God bless Donald Trump. God bless ICE. And God bless America, baby. Let's fucking go.
Nine Juan Juan to deport all illegals.
That's right.
No. He's Indian, bro.
Get that damn voodoo ritual shit out of here.
He's native, bro.
Where are the kings?
This is America. We're a Christian country. Christ is king. Christ is king.
Oh shit, I'm not gay like that, bro. I'm not gay like that. What's up?
What's up, boy? You wanna fuck me down?
No, you wanna come at me crazy, bro. It's not gonna be fun, bro. No, I can talk all I want, bro. I can talk all I want, bro. I can talk all I want, bro. I got the freedom of speech. You walk up on me, I'm gonna defend myself. I'm gonna defend my motherfucking self.
A few flowers.
Yeah, look at your fat ass, bro. Fucking violent leftists, bro. Violent ass leftists. Can't take words, so you gotta go to violence. We're not here to be violent, but we will defend ourselves one hundred percent.
I wish you would.
Conquered land, conquered people, conquered streets. Conquered people, conquered land. Run it, motherfucker. Why are you guys so violent? Why are you so violent, bro? Why are you so violent, bro?
Mentally ill men going into women's faces. And stealing medals from biological women.
Run away with your little flashlight.
Transgender men, transgender women that are men have taken over nine hundred medals from women.
He was.
I, that's what I mean. Like, I think you're out here giving a shit about.
Conquered land, conquered people, conquered land. Wobble, wobble, weeb. I will defend myself one hundred percent, bro. But I'm not here to commit violence. I'm not swinging first, but I will defend myself. You guys already know that.
It's going on your guys' transgender medicine. And your transgender surgeries. And all that dumb shit. Illegal aliens. And that's gotta stop.
Trump twenty twenty eight. There goes the violent Antifa.
Oh, yeah. You know, most presidents have.
That's the dumbest thing ever. You just watched CNN. Go watch CNN. You think you're smart and all you do is regurgitate old news. You don't think for yourself. You regurgitating a post, a views of pundits. All you're doing is regurgitating pundit news. You don't even have a thought of your own. You don't have a thought of your own. You don't have a thought of your own.
Oh, there's a shit right there.
You are closed minded. You are closed minded. No, no, hang on. You're closed minded.
We love ICE. We love ICE and fuck that people.
No one cares. My stream doesn't give a shit what you have to say because you're dumb as fuck.
You guys know we gotta deport the illegals. We gotta deport them bitches.
That fucking cuck data right there. Little bitch boy.
And how do you know it's unnecessary? You know, giving illegals our tax dollars is unnecessary.
He's too big to let him hit me first.
It's way more unnecessary than fixing the Capitol building.
I disagree.
Uh, you, so you rather give illegal aliens?
They're always like that. They'll spit when there's cops right there to protect them.
Do you support illegal immigration?
Yeah. There's no such thing as trannies. Trannies are just a kink. Trannies are just a kink. They're just retarded long gays, that's all.
Supposed to be intimidating me?
Yup.
Those SSRIs.
At least you're not, what, representing or standing up for anything you have to say.
You're not intimidating, bro. I'm just asking a simple fucking question. Why do you support illegal aliens in our country? Why can't you guys like have dialogue, like conversation?
So easily triggered by words.
You're not intimidating, bro. Are you even a man or a woman? I can't tell with you fucking people anymore. Is that a yes, you're a, a woman? Or a yes, you're a, a trans woman?
They don't know what they are.
Why are you so freaky? So freaky. So freak. So freaky. So freak. We're not here for violence, you dumbass. Why are you chipping out, bro? Why are you chipping out, bro? I'm not here to be violent, bro. I'm here to use my voice. You guys are violent. You guys are violent. Violent, violent, violent. Fat fuck. Violent, fat fuck. Violent, fat fuck. I thought I was fat, bro. Look at that shit. I'm not here to be violent, bro. Nope. I'm here to use my words. That's what we do. With your fucking mutton buttons. Oh, with your mutton buttons. That's not what your mom said. That's not what your mom said.
To talk all that shit and you're not doing shit because you're fucking soft. You want.
We're not talking shit. We're talking facts. We're talking facts. Triggered queefer.
You don't wanna do shit.
Triggered queefer.
One of you bastards are soft.
You're so triggered. You're so triggered. Why are you so fucking angry, bro? You should go enjoy yourself one day. Go have a day off. Go have a day off from being nutters.
You can't.
This is all you're doing right here. Stinky stank food with the luck. All you're doing. You fucking losers. This is all you're doing. You want your money. Cause you can't fucking do shit else. All you can do is be ignorant. Look at you guys. Fucking soft. Every last one of you fucks are soft. I hope all your viewers see how fucking soft you are.
They know I'm not soft, bro. They know we're not soft.
All you do is talk, all bark and no bite, pussy boy. Yeah. All you have to do is touch me once, bro.
Yip, yipity, yup, yup, yup. Quit chipping out, bro. Quit chipping out.
That guy doesn't want none. Go home to mommy. Two mommies. Your two mommies miss you.
You can't use your words. Violent, bro. That's all they can do is go to violence. They, they don't have answers to our questions, so they go to violence, right? They don't wanna answer that men can't become women, so they go to violence. They don't wanna answer that we shouldn't have illegal aliens in this country, so they go to violence, right?
This is the dog boy.
It looks like him.
You're missing your dog mask. It smells like shit in there. You should spray it with fucking Lysol once in a while, you puke.
He's on the transmission. He's on the transmission.
Shouldn't you have a dog mask on?
Your two moms miss you.
You shouldn't have been in front of the fucking car, you piece of shit. Go.
He doesn't know what a transmission is. She's gone. She's gone. Oh, you guys are so violent, bro. Why are you so violent? Why do you guys always wanna go to violence? Can't use your words, pussy? You guys following me now? Man, you guys are stalkers. You guys are stalkers. St- d- 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 stalkers. Yeah, she left. Oh, he left. Old pussy boy. Those cops are getting a lot of entertainment tonight. Jumanji! Do some jumping jacks. Let me get a Marlboro, bro, I only got one Camel left. I need some water in my life. Did you guys bring anything to drink?
Hey dude, we're down there three hundred deep at ICE and they don't even have cops drinking that.
Yeah, for real, they got the whole van up there. They got the whole goon squad van.
Didn't you have a dog mask on?
Why are you, why are you the epitome of a soy boy trying to be intimidating, bro? Honestly.
He's a fucking retard, man.
Honestly, why are you trying to be a, a tough guy, bro? You're not intimidating in the slightest. This is gonna be the next school shooter right here. Look at this fucking psycho.
SSRIs.
SSRIs. Cam Higbee, we love you, bro, shout out Cam in the chat. Let's fucking go, Cam, I love you, bro. Tommy pimps transfer money, what the fuck, don't, hell no, don't put that shit on me. Take off the mask. Take off the mask, why do you guys wear masks? Covid's gone, bro, and you guys are probably like quadruple vaccinated, so it's not Covid.
And the mask ain't gonna help you anyway if it is Covid.
Yeah, they proved that's a lie.
Couple dogs up in Portland, put in, put on a dog mask and you could probably hump each other.
Or share Tide Pod.
Oh, yeah, you were probably one of the Tide Pod kids, huh? You did the Tide Pod challenge? Oh, that's what's wrong, bro. That's what's wrong.
Hey, we should have brought some Tide Pods for these people with us, give them all a snack.
Yeah, you guys want a bite of a Tide Pod?
Anybody want a Tide Pod?
You guys want some Tide Pods? That's a good boy. Cam Higbee, we love you, bro, shout out Cam. Big Cam. Yeah.
Tommy TV.
Tommy TV, let's go! Let's go, we found Dog Boy in Salem. Black eyed kids all grown up, yeah. Nice perm. It's a nice perm you got there. My great grandma used to get her hair permed just like that. She rocked it way better than you, though. The mask hides the stank breath? Oh shit. Did they all come out already? Ho, man, hopefully the traffic on the way back is a lot better than the way here. We could just get there. Yeah.
You guys gonna eat anywhere before you head back?
Uh, I don't know. If we was to go like now, we could, but. Oh, I gotta be up for work, I got work in the morning now. I got work in the morning again. Fun times. Work during the day, play during the night. Is he playing pool in his pockets or is he just happy to see me? Yeah, when they mask, you don't smell their breath, yeah, for sure.
Well, we just had to come out and meet you, Tommy.
Yeah, for sure.
You made it a little bit more convenient.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, guys, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, definitely, we'll have to plan one of the, another weekend and come up on Friday and Saturday.
You come here too again.
Yeah, we definitely will. What, what college is it here?
There's Willamette University, it's right over here behind the Capitol.
Do they got liberal arts? Yeah, you too, bro, have a good night, you guys. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm in chat.
Brett for Sam, I've seen you in the chat before, I think. We are Tom, I see it all the time, yeah, let's fucking go. I love you guys, bro, have a good night. I have to be up in five hours, sleep later, Tommy. Bentley's is fire, what's Bentley's? Tommy has fans everywhere, it's crazy how many different people showed up tonight.
That's what I'm wondering.
I just ran them from watching my
They already shut it, right? Like, it's over, they already taken down that.
We are Tommy, let's go, Ronald.
They must be letting them out somewhere else, huh?
God bless you, Kill Forest Kill. Corey Wiggs. God bless you, Entropy.
I think that's freaking weird. Cause they were down by the Logan, or the Anderson, uh, room, down by the elevators on the other side, the lower doors. Just go check it out. It's two feet concrete.
Are you really cold, bro, let's warm you up, give me a hug, bro. Tommy's Yeah, Will blocked everybody, bro. Will blocked everybody. Tommy, I'mma press your ass, okay? Come get it, Eliezer, you ain't, you ain't tough, I ain't scared of you, boy.
Stacy, we love Stacy.
Yeah, thank you for coming out. Yeah. Hey, Easy Debates is in the chat, shout out Eliezer.
When I left the other night, Stacy was down there just giving it to him, that shit was hilarious.
It's a rap.
I don't know right now. I was watching her like the whole time on my way home.
He's just gonna keep talking shit, cause that's all he could do. Will blocked himself, he's un- unfriending everybody by blocking everybody, so he's doing it himself.
The headbutt king, haha, let's go. Cheers, man. I think sh- her voodoo wasn't working, so she had to pick it up. The voodoo didn't work.
Can I suplet you?
She ran out of spice or whatever the fuck she was smoking.
Oh shit. Yeah.
You cannot fix her, she's not fixable. No, you can't. She is a loser.
I'll just walk around.
Will's still ranting.
His followers are dropping you. Don't give Will any attention, just ignore him, yeah, that's for sure. Don't forget.
Probably a good stream.
It's gonna be fun, yeah. Alright, you guys, I'm gonna end the stream.
The cop was kind of explaining it, like, if you're, it's essentially if you feel threatened
Yeah, well, the eyeliner guy got federally arrested, yeah, no.
A right, I guess, to
Will is gonna start rocking eyeliner.
Not feel threatened and you, like, have a space around you that is your space, that they can't come into and if you tell them give me space or whatever. And the cop said it's pretty much like at arm's distance, you know? Yeah, he said, the cops told me like, cause that guy was like yelling to, like, come after him or come fight and all this stuff, and that he's coming after me like that. He, and, uh, he said, well, did he like put his hand on you or anything? And I go, no, and he goes, and you headbutt him first, and I go, well, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I hit him first, you know, but he was aggressing me. And, you know, I'm not gonna back up or nothing, so, he flinched towards me like three times, like in the video, like, kinda flinches his